One nation under God, indivisible and liberty in all.
Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
You move.
I second that President.
All in favor, raise your hand. Alright, the agenda today is budget and finance concerns. We have anyone here, many firms or anything to discuss it or? Charles, you got questions? Anybody's got questions? Floor is open.
May I do we have Ms. Carla William there, may I ask? I think she can explain the finance to us, Ms. Carla William.
Ms. William?
Could you come to the podium and explain to us the finance and explain to us where we at at this point here? And what we're looking at as a budget going forward?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Okay, your question?
Yeah, could just, I think that, I think concern of the council, I know I met with you already last week though, and you explained to me about the budget, what's going with the finance of the budget though. But I think the council wants you to share with them though. A few things with the budget, where we at right now, I know we had a problem with the budget a couple of weeks ago. We don't know how long it's been going on, we don't know if the books been closed out for this year or not, for the upcoming year, new budget in place or not. We're gonna be just informed of what's going on with payroll and the budget right now.
Okay, so budget first. There. To start off, back in July, as the mayor took his seat. You probably started off with about three million dollars in our general account, according to our bank statements. Also, there are no reserve funds. What has been considered as reserve funds has been the various grants that in some instances, monies will be recouped from if we've spent monies upfront from our general funds. Okay? We met with Fratinae on yesterday, and that was my specific question to them. What or do we have reserve funds? And what they consider as reserve funds is really just a surplus of monies that's left. Those are not reserve funds, okay? So, as the mayor came into office, he came into the office with three million dollars in the general fund account. We spent that the month of November. The expenses were astronomical for the month of November because we had all of our annual loans due at that time, which we have about five to six loans for heavy equipment like the fire trucks, the garbage trucks, the sweepers. We had our bond, series two thousand fifteen bond. That was a four hundred and fifty-two thousand dollar payment because the interest and the principal has to be paid twice a year. We also had insurance payments during that time that were like four hundred and thirty-four thousand dollar payment. We had our payroll, we had the fire station payroll. We had allocations that we were for the museum, for the, for the girls' club, for the library, all of those things had to come out in the month of November. And so, when they came out, that left us calorie in the rain. That, that two million dollars in some reserves always been in the general account, but you know you're not supposed to go below it. In the past though, we've been able to move money around, and those, you know, charitable giving items have always been there. So, I don't, and usually we pay them earlier. So, we need to know what's, what we have in the bank today, and in each fund today. I can, I can go out on a deal to, to.
It's in, it's in the folder I was given.
Okay, so you're all, you're already handling that right?
Thanks for the follow up.
Okay. Those are the amounts that you're looking at. That's, that's what has been in the, the account for probably for the last week or so. And we are doing our due diligence with going back, trying to recoup what we can that we've spent out of the general funds. But again, I'll say, the month of November. And you all approved the dockets to be paid. And I'm not sure if the dockets are not being looked at, but these payments were a part of the dockets. They were in there, so. So that's, I know.
Yeah, Ms. William, I, I, I think, yeah, we'll prove the docket, but I think at that point though, we wouldn't have a breakdown of, it don't tell us what's left in these funded accounts though. You following what I'm saying though? We were thinking that we had money that could carry us over though, because we just come into our new budget in October. Let me ask another question in the background, man. Have the books been closed out for September yet?
The books have not been closed.
Not been closed out.
We are still, we are working on the books to be closed and we're expecting somewhat about another three weeks, according to the person that I have in the office that, that's assisting me with closing the books.
You started with in August though, and you saying this was, when, when the mayor cops came in in July, there's only three million dollars left in the total city.
That, that is correct. I have the documentation from the bank statements. I have gone back and looked at, he has asked that information before, and we have reviewed it, and that is what was in the account at that time.
I'm looking at it now, see what all the breakdown that they made, what we paid out for all our other project, out of money we had, but out of Auburn Fund, I see what came out of the Auburn Fund money. So that money was to handle separate anyway though, when it was paid without everything broke down and came out of the proper account. But our main concern is, I think, is though, what do we go for from here? Because right now, look like we don't have enough money to, to sit operate off.
There's funds that need to be transferred over from various companies. But we want to make sure that we have the proper documentation that is supposed to transfer over. We don't want to move money that we don't have the proper paperwork. There's conversations that I've been having with the Grant Jis, Willis Engineering, with the Wild Dog projects, as well as having a conversation, fluid conversation with their designer, Ms. Michelle. We want to make sure that, if, if there's any, any other additional information that needs to be, any other projects need to be recouped, we want to make sure that we have our documentation to make sure it work up. However, we did have a, a loan taken out, three hundred thousand dollar loan that was taken out June thirtieth, that we have to start paying on January one for thirty thousand. As, three hundred thousand was taken out of the general fund for the youth center renovation. So what we're trying to do is trying to find how we can recoup those sixty thousand dollars from the usage of the youth center as well as other facilities.
I mean, I thought she, that we had that money covered for the youth center.
I, I thought we had it covered too.
It came out of the general fund. Further, further conversation, it was had between Mr. Mohammed and the council, I mean, not the councilman, Ms. Osborne. Payment was taken out, is in your phone, June thirtieth, sixty thousand dollars every year. The first payment is the thirty thousand on January one, second is seven one. We don't want, we won't even make thirty thousand from the youth center in five years, that line one.
So it's not generating this money in the youth center?
That's correct. So there's, there's a method that's been put in place to try to, try to recoup some of, if not.
I, I know we just had an audit, the land did audit, do we need to bring in another audit then?
I do, I do, I do want to see a forensic audit come in to, to look at every penny of the city. Definitely would love to see a forensic audit.
A forensic audit?
Yes.
What, what does that entail?
Forensic audit goes through all the books, makes sure that every penny is, is accountable.
Could that be Fratinae?
I'm not sure, if they do forensic audits.
Well, I don't know if they do, but. You've been in, you've been in this seat for six months, and I keep hearing a lot of blaming. At what point do you stop reaching back and start taking responsibility for this?
There's no blame, this is all factual, that's generated before me, so you're asking.
Tuesday, you didn't tell us any of this, and then we got a, a Facebook post that didn't sound like you're writing at all. Why couldn't this have been explained at our, at our normal meeting, so we didn't have to have a special meeting?
The information was, was given to, it was, it's, I didn't inform about what transpired. Me and Ms. William had a conversation. I gave it to the president, I was, I was, I was expecting that he was gonna give it to the council.
And again, well, you don't even have to just.
Allow me, allow me to finish, allow me to finish.
I hadn't given up the forge just yet.
Well, you asked the question and you want me to answer the question.
May I finish my question?
Feel free.
My, my thing is, you don't just have to go through the, the president, you can inform all of us at the same time. So again, you're throwing another person under the bus, the buck stops with you. So, we need to figure out what we have in the bank today, but we can't vote on a docket to claim to pay employees. Because we did have reserves, and reserves, even though they're in the general fund, you know you're not supposed to go beneath, below a certain amount. So, I'm just wondering where our money is, we can't, we even had to cancel our Christmas party nights, we, I mean, which is fine, but things are not good, and what, how do we, how do we intend to address it?
Well, I went two months without a city clerk, due to unfortunate situations. Ms. Osborne was out for FMLA. Ms. Williams was, I brought her to the board at the beginning of August. She wasn't approved, which would gave her two weeks to have with Ms. Nanda who was transitioned to another position, to even give her a breast of what needed to be done through her absence, it didn't happen. So when she did was approved, she still had two weeks to even transition into her new position. She had medical issues that left her out. So we went a whole two months without an actual city clerk. However, the city of Greenwood was continuing to move, I had to continue to move. So, they're trying to work to finish what was needed. You can say these, these, these loans didn't happen under my watch. So what we're trying to do is fix what's, what's been placed before me. So, you can say that I haven't been committed to, I have been. I've been very committed to, anything that they have transferred, even the hoopla you all stated about, the truck, the truck was, the truck isn't, was done legally. Anything above fifty thousand come to you. He, he allowed me to use the truck for various events for the city of Greenwood. So I wouldn't have to ask for a travel loan, I mean, a travel check. So, I, I've never, I never came at anybody, pointed fingers at anybody, I came to try to do my job to the best of my abilities. So, I've only had opposition and resistance since day one. So, but the thing is, I never gripped, never pointed finger, never said or complained about anything else placed before me. This three hundred thousand dollar loan, that wasn't, that hadn't before I even stepped in, but yet and still, I'm trying to find a way to make this happen. So, that's where I'm at.
Thank you, ma'am. So, Ms. Carla William?
Let me, let me say something to the entire group. Anytime there's a transition between mayors, there are certain things that should be done between the two mayors. It didn't happen. The predecessor should have been given all of the, the bills and things that the city owes, so he can know what he's coming into. That didn't happen. He should know what bonds are transitioning from her state to his state. That didn't happen. So there are a lot of things that you will not know. The same thing with me and Ms. Linda, there are a lot of things that she may have been working on that I'm not aware of. And when I take that seat, if Ms. Linda is not available, it will be kind of hard for me to know where to pick up at and where to continue without Ms. Linda. So, at this point, they should know, should, there are not, I don't think that we should be saying who's, who's in fault. We have a problem, and it needs to be resolved. And how do we resolve it? Resolution is what I'm looking for today.
Ms. William, what you're saying is so critical, that's why we're here. We're not here to point fingers and blame anybody. This, this is a serious problem here, I find that, we got bills to pay, we got payroll to make, we got things to do. And what you're saying is critical, it's not time to point finger, but I thought the previous mayor had got what you, uh, the mayor cops, and opened up the door so you can just come in and show you what's going on, the previous mayor didn't do that?
She came, well, I had a meeting and she introduced me to the various departments.
I mean, it should have been a change in the behavior of everything, that way you can know what's going on though. And that was, should have took place, that way the government can still operate and move forward though. Because a lot of things that, that's what any job, when someone take over a job, someone should be there to show them what we at now, what we're going forward to, that way we know what the Monday's coming from, what's in the account. You know, I was under the impression that we had a reserve, I think this whole city council would, that we had a reserve of like.
The reserve was, the reserve was grants. Extended by Fratinae. And those same, those same funds are still in, in the account now. Given, take the one point five million that was spent with Sonco's for the, which grant was there, I'm gonna say from the office funds, was left out, three hundred thousand.
And we are still, as I said, going back through, Ms. Vicki and I looked at some stuff yesterday that we may be able to pull monies from one of the grants to put back into the general fund account. However, from my point of view, we still need funds to move forward into the city.
Let me ask one question.
I have one question to ask. All the tax cards have been sent out for property taxes, is there any rejection on how much more revenue the city is gonna get with this increase in taxes, or is it mostly school tax? I know the property taxes went up, I'm hearing a lot of howling.
I am not sure of the projection, that is something that I will have to get with Mr. Ware on, on this week to kind of look at what we can expect from those property taxes.
So, Ms. William, so right now, I, I, I think what you said, we need to know where we go forward from here now. Could we continue to stay afloat, I know we don't have the revenue month of life, we got bills that started coming in, we got employees that's still working. I'm getting many questions from the citizen, employees also, wanna know if they're gonna be able to get paid, or we're gonna be able to pay the bill. Could you give them some kind of comfort word saying that we are, we can stay afloat for a little while longer, or what, they want to do? Because they want to know, mayor, do you have anything? Because they're concerned about that, and I'm concerned about it.
You have in front of you.
I'm looking at numbers.
In the bank. There are no reserves in order for us to move forward, some revenue has to come from, so.
But our son's money, we can't use at all in a general fund like this, this American Rescue money, a lot of this money became cut.
Some of the grants are restricted, you can only use those for what they've been given to us to use.
So what, what we have in, in, in the general fund here, that is basically our operating money that we have for the city. Operating money, and then what's happening in the general fund? I think our payroll is more than, more than this, I think, when you put the payroll into it. That includes paying a lot of bills that, that's, that's due. Are, are we behind on the bills now, or we, what we have on, on, for us paying, paying bills now?
The only docket that we, we missed was the, the prior docket. As, as far as I know, we should be up to date with the exception of the last docket.
So going forward now, what's in this general account is not gonna even be payroll, so we're gonna be hiding on payroll and everything else that we don't have, look like now, or that we can find some money?
Money is gonna be recruited from various grants.
We will, we will recoup what we can from, what we spent from the general.
Then we have.
This week. And we are just praying for that it's gonna be enough to, to have our payroll.
Could you give this council a dollar amount, what we're talking about, what, what was told you, killed from the general grant? A dollar amount, we have a dollar amount, mayor, in mind?
We have to make sure we go through everything to make sure what we have. We have to make sure they are documentation there, the money is, that is shown on the papers in the account. If we have to move until we get our necessary funds in to make sure it's taken care of, so be it. But it will be replaced, I guess I do state that, I do believe that we need to a forensic audit soon as possible.
Would you be willing to have Carolyn come in and help you with this? Because she did, she managed that budget even during COVID when there was nobody here, I mean, so.
I'm not opposed.
She, she, she offered you that, that help, I know she did. She did, and you haven't wanted to take it, I know. Or you would have called her.
I agree to disagree.
If you had wanted to take it, you would have called her, so there's nothing to disagree about. You didn't take it.
That's right.
You need help, so let's get you the help that you need because, you know, this, this, us not being able to pay this, this jeopardizes any future grants, this jeopardizes being able to borrow anything. I talked to Jamie Holloway yet last week, he said Greenwood was like one of the last places in the Delta that ran their city well. And if you let this fall apart, it's gonna be in trouble. So I'm, I'm very concerned, I, I'm extremely concerned.
So these, this reserve account that you sent, that we've been sending reserve or grants, money due now, payments are due now.
All you gotta do is call Carl Grub and, and submit your invoices.
Having not been taken care of.
Let the mayor finish.
Payments have been, that money has been sitting in, in account until this work has been done. Majority of the, of the work is eighty-five to almost completion, so payments are due now. So what, we've been calling reserve, that money has to come up. What was happening, it was paying out of the general funds. Now, I would think now, we're in the process of trying to recruit the money that is from those various, various grants.
I'll reiterate what Lisa said, that some of our bond people said that Greenwood was a jewel of the Delta financially. And we ain't looking like no jewel right now. I mean, and this thing, it can be a train wreck, people gotta get paid, bills have gotta get paid. I, I would say it's a conundrum.
So.
The only reason a problem exists is to be solved, and we need, and then it ain't a problem anymore. We need to be looking for a solution, there's, there is somebody that knows how to untangle this thing. Because it's been untangled forever and ever and ever to get us to this point where we have a reputation of paying our bills, paying our employees, having enough money to pay everybody. And some, all, all the cylinders are not hitting somewhere.
Right, like two months without a city clerk.
Running really well, but I, I just need, we need to figure out a pathway to get out of this kind of situation in the meeting. Because if we ever lose our bonding capacity, if we ever lose the ability to pay our employees, and our bills go back once or two or three, four hundred not paid, we ain't seen nothing yet. I mean, it, uh, we have, we're basically going in a government shutdown and we didn't declare shutdown. You know, I, I just, I just don't know, I think we need, I don't, I don't know, I didn't have an accounting degree. All I know is, is to prove and read over what we've been given, and make sense of it, and go. We never, the money was always there, Carolyn was here sixteen years, we never had a meeting like this, I'm not, I'm, I'm just saying. There was a system in place and something in that system is, is, hadn't got any traction. We need to find out what it is and solve that problem, and then move on with the business of this city. And where that answer is, I don't know. I'm, I'm, I'm not, I, I don't guess I am complaining a bit, but, you know, we, we just need to get, we need to solve this thing. And this, this is, this is, this is not good, I mean, this is going on in this room, but once the reputation gets out that we got a big problem, then we got a real big problem.
To start off, three million dollars is not a lot to run, to start, even start to run the city here. That's what we had, that's what you had, July one, that's what was in that account. That's, that's not a lot of money. When you, when you have loans and, and bonds that are coming due, and you know that they have to be paid, you cannot borrow and don't pay it back. So, when, when it's time to pay the loans back, they have to be paid, regardless of, you know, how many funds you have in the bank. The bank wants their money that they loan.
I know there's a process for moving money around, but that three million dollars is not filling the road, what's the city budget? How much, what's the total city budget? How many millions of dollars? Twenty-five, twenty-eight million?
Not including, not including that one, they dropped me off by, by, by eleven, twelve million dollars.
And from what I have looked at in the past from the prior mayor, there was more monies there for the city to operate with. This is the hand that you've been dealt with how much monies was left in the account to operate on. If we're not bringing in any revenue, you're operating your day to, day to day operations and paying your yearly bills, that's what they are, because they only do once a, a year. This is what you see. This is, this is what you see, if you don't have funds to move around, you can't move on around. You have to have the funds there to move around. I don't think, I don't think the wheels came off the train this quickly. Yes, they did, yes, they did, Lisa. They came off this quickly, they came off. That quickly under our watch and see. Yes, we were, as we were. And how many other ones it was.
Let's just one, one, let's just one talk at a time, I, I think, will you finish, Ms. William?
I wasn't. Well, I was saying, no, no, I started this, I'm tired of being told.
Yeah, no, 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 let her finish, then, then we come on, then you come in and ask the question, William.
Well, I did, I said, I'm waiting, wheels came off and then I was in a rush.
She wasn't finishing when she was talking.
Ms. William, do it, finish, William. Are we, are we finally, so we should have solved the problem though?
I'm finished, Ms. McCoy. I thank you all for your support, that is my report that I have to give to the council. We are in need of revenue.
Ms. William, one, one point I have for you though, I'm looking at the revenue we have here in all these accounts here, I stayed earlier though, and the general fund is what we operate out of, and this general fund I'm looking at now, I had never seen this low, this low, low general fund though, and we not gonna be making payroll in it too, we know. This kind of general fund, we not gonna be to pay bills with this. This kind of general fund, we're not gonna be to pay bill with this money in the general fund unless the grant money comes in. Like you you stayed a minute ago, do we looking at grant money coming in, we saying soon, how soon we looking at some money would come in to you?
Those that we're trying to recoup is just a matter of transferring them from one account to the other. But we have to do our due diligence in making sure that we have actually spent money from our general account to pay for improvements from these grants. We have to also make sure that what the grant says has to happen is what we actually did with the improvements, so.
So in the essence, this is an account, this is an plan of bank account. Only thing is, when we identify what is supposed to be transferred to general, I agree it's a struggle, but.
So this is the transfer amount, we said, oh yeah, what should be transferred on this pay bill?
If if we spent the money, we transfer it to the general uh, general account.
So we hadn't spent the money and we can't transfer what we've been spent, I thought we were saying on that. Mayor Cox, uh, and and I don't impose on you on bringing anyone in to assist you, especially uh, unless you agree to bring it in. From a mayor Carol McAdam, to come in and tell us what's going on, as it shows what what transpired in the change in the name of the guard. And what she making sure for, I thought she had to, she had already just come in, come in and work you on that.
Great disagree, but I I don't oppose this issue.
You agree to us coming, just to tell you what what took place then? So we can go forward now, of the city Greenwood, we more concerned about taking out city Greenwood, you are too, I I know you are. Uh, we're not gonna point finger and blame anybody, we're not here to do that, but we wanna get to get to the bottom of this here, so we can move forward. I think me and Councilwoman Palmer covered that earlier though, you wanna come in with Councilwoman Palmer?
Linda, you got anything to say about a pay payment out of this?
For one thing. The uh, youth center, remember, that was not a loan, we borrowed it from ourselves. Remember, the youth center, the, once we got it renovated, it was, we were going to reimburse the youth center. We never went and actually borrowed the money, right, so that's one thing, there's not a loan out there. That sixty something thousand dollar payment, I had let through us an arbit- uh, arbitration thing so that we would know about how much it would take to pay that money back, but no paperwork was ever signed on that. So, okay, you don't have sixty five thousand, it's no big deal to pay back the youth center because it was really never a payment, you know what I'm saying, y'all, y'all get that? Uh, we don't owe trademark on it, we owe the youth center on it, okay. So that's one thing, but um, another thing for like uh, these bond payments that come out in October, they were budgeted for for September, the prior year. Cause we knew they were coming out in October first, so we needed to go ahead and put it in the budget to take care of. So that money was already there. Workers' comp or or that four hundred thirty seven thousand, that's a always a big kicker, nobody knows how much it's gonna be. It went up big time this year, so that's, you know, you never know. Each individual department is supposed to pay for their workers' comp. Now, whether it's, you know, pretty much all of them come out of general fund except for sewer. Uh, so when you paid it, I don't know if you used sewer money, you know, I don't know. I don't, I don't honestly know what has happened. But I do think you need to get an independent auditor in there to look at everything. So if we have transferred funds from one account to another and it shouldn't have been, we know to transfer it back, correct it and go on. But um, no funds were misappropriated, no funds were embezzled, you can look at anybody's checking account and it's not in there. So all I can say is, it should have been there, it might have got put in the wrong account. Maybe a deposit got put in the wrong account, maybe like said on our uh, grants that we have to um, get reimbursed on, have we sent in for that money? Uh, the healthy homes, that's huge, have we got that money back? That's probably two hundred and ninety thousand dollars or so, it's just gotta ask for it.
We're in the process of getting those funds back. There's a process you have to go through, me being a new person, where you have to do a registration and somebody has to give you access in order to request those funds back. As of today, that the the role has not been given to me to request the funds back. So we do have funds, two hundred and thirty thousand dollars, um, to be exact, that we have to request um, from the healthy home grants, and if they spend anything else, that will come at another time.
Generally, how long does that process take once we find for those funds to come back?
On the healthy homes, probably about four days, I mean, I mean, they're quick. Uh, Walthall Street project, I'm sure some of those bills have come in, that's a whole nother checking account. That has like a million dollars in it, wasn't paid out of general fund. See, a lot of things like, you got to look, all right, just cause you can go back and look and say, we paid Willis Engineering out of this fund. That doesn't mean it was for that particular project, it might have been for the Azure River Trail. So you have to look at that, cause there's, well, you have, you have about five or six checking accounts. And it wasn't the transition from Bank of Commerce to Planters Bank, that was done back in March. No problem, we always had access to our money. It's because some of those weren't even open in under Bank of Commerce, they're open at Planters Bank. So we've always had access to our money, we just might have written a check out of a different account. Cause like I said, you got two checking accounts for Walthall Street, one's like one point five million, the other's five hundred thousand, that's two million there.
We can't do that in-house, see what, when that bill was paid, where it came from.
Yeah, we'd have to go back and look at everybody that we paid.
Thirty five, forty thousand dollars to come in and untangle something, we probably could, if we do a little backtrack, then we might be.
And that's why I'm just saying, that's what we are actually doing, that's what we're doing now to see if there is funds that can be recouped, I've already said that, I said, I stated that the last meeting that's like.
I just think it was just a common, it was just an honest mistake that we might have paid a street fund out of the general. But those bills, those funds cannot co-mingle. You cannot uh, just write a check out of Walthall Street to pay us back, you got to have each individual bill there and they've got to look at it, see, make sure it was okay to pay those bills for us to get our money back.
That's what we need to be doing right, right, sweetie? Because if there's money out there and we got, we need to start gathering it up and putting in our funds so this, we can do business, the city can do business. We got the money, we need to get the money.
I think we've already stated that though, about the different accounts though, of the all list on all different accounts that's broke down on you. Same thing that Ms. Linda's talking about, it's on these papers, you know, all the different grants we got and all the different accounts we got. Uh, it's only listed here, everything except the account, it's on you already, I think the concern now is, we could bring our money back on this grant money. That's that's what I can make a concern now, is to bring this money back in that we might have spent out though. And I think we can't bring it back in if we got documents showing that we use our account, right, Ms. Williams, or to put it back in. So then the process of doing that.
We have to make sure the funds was spent out of the general funds before we can transfer the funds back to the general account.
And Mayor, how soon we gonna be gonna, you have the man on doing a little audit then?
Yeah, with the leisure of the board because it has to be approved by the board.
Yeah, we need to do that soon then, I think, I think we we all agreement on that, if our council all agreement on that, we'll do a little audit soon though, see what we had though.
I think it should have been done prior to now.
And reconcile the bank statements immediately.
Attorney, do we need to get that in a, in a resolution, attorney saying we're gonna do an audit, how many do that? Could we just do it, I know we got a, I I I know we call a special meeting, do we, can we do it in this special meeting?
I mean, you can vote and I can, you know, it'll be in the minutes, and that's in writing, but I I think uh, do you do you know who will be used at this point?
Somebody that's aware of our, the way the city's done business, who does our present audit, of course, that's done at a year end. It'd be good for somebody that knows the pathway that we've gone down to get audit to to do the audit.
Um, I mean, the the council could take a vote, giving permission to move forward with a forensic audit. Uh, and and of course, when a particular firm is chosen, I think they vote again approving that firm and and whatever the charges are gonna be.
Let's research it, let's research.
Alright, so we have a motion to proceed with uh, procuring somebody to check us out, do an audit.
I saw a move, President.
All in favor, raise your right hand. So all of us, some of us, some of us don't wanna get to the bottom of this, so.
Attorney, carry the motion, I think we have one opposed, anybody opposed?
Anybody opposed? Abstention? Abstention goes with the majority.
But she opposed, she said she opposed.
Opposed, okay.
Mayor, some, you get somebody in mind, may as bring in, we, I think it'd be kinda clear for everybody what's going on, do you be clear what it is there? See what's going on with the transition of the finance though. Get to the bottom of it.
When I talked to the state auditor, he was talking about, yes, getting someone in, but talking about agreed upon procedures, maybe not quite an audit, but you know, I don't know the difference between that, that's not my, my wheelhouse either, but.
Ask the attorney what's different, attorney, what's the difference in attorney?
Agreed upon procedures in accounting as opposed to an audit? I don't know, that was something Tom Chang said.
I I don't even do my own taxes.
You know, it may just be a portion of this we need to look at, because that's a lot of money right there, and if we've been paying it out of our own funds, all you gotta do is look at those accounts. And see how they were paid and what they were paid out of, and and what the process is to get that money refunded to us out of these grants. It may be a one, two deal.
I think all funds you need to be, uh, that's it.
That that would be for them to sign. Cause we got a good track record of paying our bills and paying our people and we've just, you know, ne- never been in a meeting since I've been here thirty two years where we were short. I I know we've had to uh, borrow on our big reserves sometimes, we didn't have enough tax revenue to to put into our general fund to pay our bills, we've had to draw down on that, and I, you know, I don't know if we got either that to draw down on or not. Paul, can you remember?
My first thing, what I'm hearing by President is not, no reserve, my president, I know he used that word reserve though, but I'm hearing that was a reserve though.
I had the hard time. That's why I would, I would strongly recommend asking for help, get Carolyn back in here or someone else.
It may be a simple solution, it may be. And then it ain't a problem anymore. You know, I ask for help all the time, and I I have to bend down a little bit and ask for it, but you know, if I'm in trouble, I I I try to seek some help.
Well, too many people are relying on us for their paycheck and it's very scary and I feel for them. So we can't, we can't approve anything until we know what we have. Thanks statements being reconciled, and that stops with you. So I mean, I don't, I don't see too much worry, you seem, you seem okay with everything.
It's a critical time of year not to get paid.
You don't know, you don't know me, so this is your assumption, but we agree to disagree.
Some people go paycheck to paycheck and some folks go three or four checks behind. It doesn't take long to get off in a place where you can't get back out of, we got good employees. It's our responsibility to make sure that uh, we keep the house in order and I I I think we're on the right path, but it needs, we need to get it done. They're asking, that that, I've got hundreds of people.
People being paid is in our best interest, all of us, cause if they don't get paid, we don't get paid either, so. We're concerned. Even if my face don't look like it, I'm concerned. And I took the job, my integrity means everything to me, the city is my business. And I want to make sure that it's ran the way it should be run, and that's what I'm doing.
And I think that that audit would have been done when the administration had changed out though. Yeah, it will show us that before we get now, and that was never done now, and the audit should have been done in prior to administration changing out. I think every business does that though, and and in my business, I have to do it though. When I retire, I have to do an audit, I mean, while I had enough, left, 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 left going on, people carry on from there with it. So I think, I think the audit should have been done prior to the administration changing out though.
Well, we just had a budget.
But still, an audit would just give us a clear understanding what the books, what was in the books and what was on hand, what was available to use.
Anytime you have a transition, the first thing you do.
Do audit.
You have an audit.
Yeah, the guy she was, was in there left available, I thought we we had a little.
We did have an audit, and when, we did, that's all we got.
He was up there.
We were, we did, and it was.
That's wastewater audit.
Whatever done then, we missed some somewhere then.
We had an audit, we had a full, full audit before, you know, you came on board and everything was in order. We did.
That was, that was during the prior administration.
That's right, not much changed.
When you take office, uh, I think you need to have your own audit now, so you'll know what you're dealing with.
When you change everybody with any knowledge too, it makes things very difficult.
The mayor has the privilege to change, um, Ms. Ms. Cookston. When he came aboard, um, he has, he has the right to choose who he wants to work on his team as every other mayor before him has.
Thank you for the, um, thank you for your lecture, I'm gonna tell you something else. Also, people when they come in, leaders, good leaders, also don't necessarily change, they watch, they learn a little bit. So that I understand what you're saying, and yes, he did do exactly what he was doing, he did exactly what was in his right to do. And now we see, now we see the repercussions of it.
Alyssa, well, uh, I think we, I think we're saying the same thing, we need to find it to the bottom of it though. I I that way we can move forward from this, this thing, I don't know, that was about, not about one thing right now, we are in.
As I have stated, resolution. The funds were were there. We paid the bills that the city owed, and now we need some revenue.
We need revenues soon, very soon, uh, we're not gonna be able to to still float. I I I think this, this is serious, and most people are thinking that this is serious business now. We can't operate off of off, what's in this account now, I'm looking at the bottom line, and some of the grant money, and some of the accounts you can't pull out. I know we're talking about different accounts, all of them is listed on here, and it looked like to me they've been pulled out of the right account. The problem is now though, where do we go from here with it though, to 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 fix, fix whatever problem we need to fix it though. Uh, any problems, opportunity to fix it, so let's try to work together best we can and kind of resolve some of these problems though. Every problem is an opportunity for us to jump on board and do best we can, we requested audit already, so the mayor finds one, wanna bring in, let's do the audit and see what's going on there, like I stated earlier, it should have been done prior, the mayor taken over, the audit should have been done. But but now we gotta move forward though, can't go backwards, uh, can't go back, you made some changes. Uh, can't go backwards. You made some changes in the administration. We gotta go forward with them. Gotta go forward. From this day on, let's try to go forward. But, 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 Mayor, I appreciate it, Mayor. We need to send an email out to the president, send to the city councilman too. That way they can be all, all, that's up to them, what's going on now. Sometimes the president get, get, get busy though. He got lots, a lot of things going on also himself. So it's kind of put all the city council where everybody can be aware of what's going on. Or we, we can nip things. Soon we find out something going on, we can jump on it though. Maybe we can get these problems solved though. But this is a serious business though. I hope we can sell float until we get the extra grant money. Looking like now, we ain't gonna be able to sell float. And I don't mean for the citizens to get again in panic mode, but look like we're not gonna be able to sell float. Little bit of any numbers.
Okay, President. Any questions anybody else has got? I, I just, you know, I, I just think we need to find out where, if we money in the wrong place, we took it in the wrong place, we cost it. Is y'all's money? And we're out there looking after it and we're trying to look after it and there's not any, mm, um, mm, 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 like that because there's fifteen thousand other people out here in this room right here that are talking to me, calling me, saying Johnny, what's the condition out there? Trying to find an answer. Uh, and we all wanna know. Oh, we, we, we wanna know how to get out of this conundrum. That's what we wanna do. And it's not, it's not, not a finger pointing thing. It's a problem that needs to be resolved. You, I, I just, I've been out here thirty-two years. Every time, I've never seen a house clearing like we had. Somebody came in, they were here four, five, six months and then maybe at the place of the mayor, after a person that was in the second place in that office, learned how to do the job, they were moved around. They just didn't take a hundred and thirty-two years of experience and say, five o'clock, get your stuff and get out of this. There's some knowledge that could have been transitioned into, into the office. It may have been a smooth transition, but hit a brick wall and now we had to pick up all the pieces and get started again. I tell you, that's the way it is. You know, if I, if, if they put me in charge to run the train, in a, in a big thing, I'd like to be in there with the conductor for about six months and kind of see how they work that train just a little bit. And I'd just say, uh, you want that job? I'm gonna give you that job. Do you know anything about it? No, I'll owe JT. I'll learn it. It may take six, eight months to learn it. But right now, it looks like this six, eight months has put us in this medium.
I agree to disagree.
Saying, I just.
The numbers still the numbers.
And I'm sorry to be that, that, that way, but that's just, that's the way it is.
And the numbers still the numbers, whether we had the previous or on current, the numbers still the numbers. These loans created way before July one.
But you know, you just, there, there's knowledge that you, people get over the years in these jobs and, and they just do. I mean, it's just a fact you have to face, uh, you know, I don't know.
Uh, President.
But we gonna find out.
President, I think from now, let's move forward and go with it now.
Do you wanna get back together again and see if we get any, uh, um, things about those grants, where the money went, when we?
Yeah, I think if we call, we'll be walking all that down as we speak on, on the grant line. Ms. Linda, I love some of the, from you, from you, uh, cause I'm back to work.
I go to the doctor on the fifteenth and I'll see if he released me in.
But for the meantime, let's keep, keep moving forward, Mayor. You guys, I gotta move forward. I gotta move forward.
Anything else? You stand adjourned.